Okay, the time being 7:10, I'll call the June 8th, 2020 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Subsection 18, and Governor's March 15th, 2020 order concerning impositions on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We strive to provide access to such meetings via a link. To call in or other similar option, in the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. Okay, first on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval. We have 25 Sullivan Boulevard is an A and R. Okay, dated May 14th, 2020. Applicant William and Lynn Fenn of 25 Sullivan Boulevard, Oxford, Mass. Surveyor Todd Chapin of Marlborough. The assessors map 48, Passau 1.24 zoning district, R2. And the deed, the property is recorded in WISD District Registry of Deeds Book 23261, page 32.
Hang on, one last second. Is the audio, do you see audio on?
Mary, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Norman.
Sorry, I ran into some traffic, Rich.
Okay, that's okay. Everything on this A and R is in order? But I have some, I have some reservations on the A and R itself, as far as frontage. I'd like some explanation on needing the 150-foot frontage. Especially on what's considered Lot 21, which is an existing house. I see the other lot has ample frontage. I just questioned the 140.6 feet. But then there's a 13.29 feet, so I, I'm looking for total frontage there, and I don't know what that 13.29 feet is. It looks like to some sort of bound. I take it, I take it right now, this is one lot, and you're trying to divide, cut up another lot out of it? Is that what's happening here? Can the applicant explain that to me?
The applicants are on this call. I'm the real estate agent.
Okay.
And yes, they're, we're trying to subdivide it. So that if the new buyer wishes to, they can subdivide it. We're not going to subdivide it before it's sold. But we want the ability to be, to sell it with that possibility.
Well, that's, I was hoping your surveyor would be here to explain that 13.29. If I add that to the 140, we're okay. But there's nothing that says where that 13.29 really goes to. Okay, what I'm looking for is 100-foot frontage to meet the zoning. Especially since that's the house that has, that's the lot that has the existing house on it. If it was the other way around, I'd say, well, you've got a pass. And if you don't have enough frontage down the road, then it's not buildable. I mean, you meet it in every other way. It's just the frontage issue in my mind.
Does anybody, any of the planning board, other planning board members have any comments on the plan?
I don't, no.
No, I don't either.
I don't.
Think they're two, two sufficient lots, Norman?
I had the same question you got. What's the minimum, 150 feet or?
That's what it says. It even says it on the, you know, they, this, they got that as the zoning of our two, you know, minimum frontage, 150.
So is the 13 feet going to be added to the one?
Forty, if that's the case, then they got it. I'm happy.
Yeah.
But I,
Then we're all set.
I can't interpret that, though. I don't want to interpret it because there's a house on that existing pass.
Hi, Lynn. Are you not on? Okay. Sure, okay. I'll try and convey what I can to the planning board. Maybe I'll put you on speaker.
Bill Fenn? Hi, everybody.
Hi, Bill.
What you're seeing from the survey, there's a concrete bound. Okay, and so when he did the layout, the bomb was already in place. So it is a combination of the two measures. To make the difference. It was two lots even before, when we bought it originally. And it had 150 feet of frontage when it was purchased originally. And then it was turned into one lot. Now we're turning it back into two lots. So it is a combination of the two measures. I can get clarification if needed from the surveyor. What you're seeing is the concrete bomb in place, it's a marker, it's a known marker.
Yeah, but where the 13.29 feet is, I can't interpret that being on the right side of that bound. I mean, it's not clear to me. Feedback.
I don't, I don't have to count that one, two lots before it could turn into one.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. It would have been better to put a note on there saying total frontage is 153.89 feet. Okay, and then put that 13.29 feet in parentheses to bound, or something from the,
Yeah, I left it at the discretion of the engineer.
I'm just, I'm having a hard time interpreting that. And I don't want to create a, I don't know if this was the original lot that that house was built on. I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at a plan that's just made, okay? Actually, when I got the A and R in there, I thought you were taking one lot and you're dividing, creating another lot out of it. Okay, and I want to make sure that the existing house has the appropriate frontage. I don't want a non-conforming structure there. I don't know why the, why it's angled the way it is. Gave the other one 166.15 feet. Okay, all those things are at the discretion of your surveyor. He put 16 more feet on that lot. And it came off the one that has the house on.
Right, where we live.
I have enough total frontage to do two lots. Like you say, it's just a matter of how they divide it. If that 13 feet is from that little marker to the property line, then we're all set. I guess if we got some clarity on that, it wouldn't be a problem.
I can't understand what Norman's saying.
Norman says, Norman's saying if he interprets that 13.29 feet as additional frontage versus the L equals 140.60, then it has the appropriate frontage. And I agree with that statement, but I, we're doing some interpretation to get there. And I don't want that on the plan. I want it clear on the plan. I think I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate the fact that if you guys would allow us to, allow us to withdraw you without prejudice, or remove your request and come back after you get that clarified. I think, at least I'd appreciate that. Looking at the facts and figures.
Sir? This will affect the sale of, we have a, we have an offer to perjure. We have an accepted offer on the assumption that this lot is buildable. There is, there is the needed frontage that you need. What do we need to do to get it in words for you?
We need the plan to say that your house that has house, existing house number 25, has 150-foot minimum frontage. Right now, I don't have that, a figure that says that. A figure that says you don't have it.
Okay, so we need to take it back to the engineer and get him to redo the numbers? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, show the entire frontage length. He can keep the 13.29 if that's from the boundary of the property line. He can keep that in there, but L should be a combination of the two.
So that means we have to wait till now July's meeting?
No, the end of June 22nd, Lynn.
And do we need to go back?
Send me a PDF. I can print it out for the board members, but I'll need the Mylar and three copies.
Okay, well, then that's what we have to do.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to be clear. In fact, anyone that buys your house, your property, if you decide to leave, would want that clarified too.
It's the same person. He's buying both the house and the lot next to it, all in one piece.
Okay, I just want to make sure they have a, you know, a conforming lot.
Right. Okay. Yeah, that's why we're here. So now we need to know what to do.
All right, so you'll, you'll allow us to withdraw this application without prejudice, so you can re-submit it?
I don't think we have any other options.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's the only issue on that plan? Is that correct?
That's it. I don't have any other problem. That was why I was hoping the engineer would be here.
Well,
Quite frankly, he should, he should have known he was putting something down there that didn't reflect the minimum frontage that, that is required, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, well, thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, entertain a motion to allow them to withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
I'll second that, Rich.
You'll make it. You'll make it, Dale. We'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Christine seconded. All those voting in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. I say aye. Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Okay. Carried unanimously with the five members. Thank you. Sorry about that. I didn't, I wanted to upset that apple cart, but that's, that was a kind of a standoff to me. Okay, next on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2020.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Rogers?
I will second that.
Okay, Dale seconds it. Any discussion? Issues? If there be none? All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, I guess, Rich.
Yeah. Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
And Norman?
Aye.
Okay, carried unanimously. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 27th, 2020.
I'll make it a motion, Rich.
Okay, Norman made it a motion. There's a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger?
My glasses, Rich.
Okay, any discussion? Issues, any type? No? All those voting in favor? I say aye. Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
And Norman?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Under Old Business 30, Sullivan Boulevard, we have an acceptance of a stormwater management as-built plan. And I looked at it. And I had to, at that size plan anyway, there's a lot on it.
My apologies, Rich. I told the engineer that to forego the large-sized copies.
Well, you know, it's been so long, I don't even remember 30 Sullivan Boulevard. It must have been a long time in the process and in the making, yeah.
It was. So Stephen, do you want to speak to it about 30 Sullivan?
I will. Again, thank you for entertaining the application and I met with Peter Gerhart, and we'll, what's after, oh, I'm sorry, this morning. And we reviewed the storm detention facility. And one of the things that I'd like to point out with you, and I believe that this was covered in the letter and also my calculations that are in fact, that the basin was actually built larger than what is depicted in, on a previous permission. And so what I did is I reran the post-development hydraulic calculations and found that even though the berm was a foot lower, the basin as such, the capacity of it was able to permit the post-development peak and attenuate it to existing levels. So that was a good find. I'm happy that it went that way instead of the other. The other things I'd like you to note is that most of the, the site has been stabilized with grass. It's not exactly three inches yet, but it's at least inch and a half in all places. There is a stormwater drainage trench that occurs on the western side of the site along the property line, which measure, or actually give the direction of north 32, three minutes, three seconds west. That also, that drainage gully has stabilized and there is stone attenuation devices at the quarter points of the length. Very interesting to see that, but we've also included, as you can see on the upper left-hand corner, from one of the previous submissions, the orientation for the septic field has been changed. And we provide you all of the as-built information that was recorded when the system was actually put in place and our guys are surveying, people went out and took all of the inverts on the pipe, all the inverts at the tank and the distribution box, as you can see, that are in red, have been recorded, plus swing ties from each of the positions that you can see from A all the way to, or AC to BH. There is test pit data for each one of the test pits on the site that comply with all of the regulations put forth in the Title V septic laws for the Commonwealth. We've also included a section of the, well, at the time it was proposed, but now it's existing, relationships between the tank, the distribution box, and the field itself. All of those are put in there as as-built information. And finally, we provided details for the tracking pad that was constructed and all of the environmental erosion controls that, and measures that were used during the construction process that have, for the most part, been taken out of commission because most of the site at this point is stabilized. So that really leaves, I don't know, have you received a letter from Peter Gerhart about my submission and resubmission of the clogs for the stormwater drainage basin?
No, we haven't got anything from him. That's why I was going to ask.
I sent that to all of you this afternoon via email.
You did?
I did.
Mary, I didn't get it.
I didn't get it. No, I didn't get it.
You didn't get it?
No.
No, I'll take your word for it. If the, the engineer is saying they met with the guy and then,
Yes.
So what's the essence of the email? Okay, everything okay with the DPW?
So DPW, I'm going to just read it into the record.
Okay.
DPW was requested to inspect and comment on the construction of a stormwater basin designed by Burton Engineering. On June 8th, 2020, after review of the construction documents provided and a meeting with the design engineer, engineer, our comments are provided below. The perimeter berms of the basin appear to be one foot lower than originally designed. Steve Pykoul, Burton Engineering, will be providing calculations along with an affidavit showing the basin will meet the regulatory standards. Two tree stumps located in the basin need to be removed and partial reseeding of the basin floor is needed. So number one has been addressed with the revised calculations that were sent by Burton Engineering. And I'm not sure about number two and number three, Steve, about the stumps that need to be removed and partial reseeding?
I spoke with Russ Cordoval, who is the builder of the system, the stormwater drainage system, and he said that he will be out this coming week and he will remove the stumps. And he will also reseed the bottom of the basin where there is a little bit of, let's just say, absence of a wetlands mix that should be put into the basin and there should be established growth there.
Well, and my recommendation is we don't approve this site plan until the actions are complete and we can get a a firm memo from the DPW that says all his issues were taken care of.
Well, at the site, excuse me, what's your last name, Richard?
Escalus.
Richard, I actually spoke with Peter this, this morning, and he said that, you know, those conditions can be met pretty soon and that he was fine with what our approach would be. And as far as I was concerned, he seemed that most of the things that were in place and met with his approval.
Well, I agree, but he still has a problem with the area, the stumps in the basin and the, he wants it addressed. And how else do we get it addressed other than keep something that you need, which is a,
You could approve the application with conditions. And then once they are complete, you could give us an approval. Because the one thing that is preventing Mrs., I believe the pronunciation, your last name is Poodles. She would like to get an occupancy. She's actually living in the house now, but she'd like to convert her mortgage, which is currently a construction loan, into a regular mortgage. And where, if we don't give her an approval tonight, she would be prevented another month in doing so. And quite frankly, what could happen is, you know, we have to wait for an established grass anyways. It's not exactly three inches high. So even if they seeded it and pulled the stumps out the way we're being discussed, it's not going to establish growth for another two or three months. So, you know, you would be postponing the application for an initial two months, which honestly, I don't think is fair given the circumstances. We met all the compliance standards here with just two exceptions. And I believe it would be prudent to, you know, push the application and approve it with conditions.
Rich, I have a question. Does she have an occupancy permit now?
She does.
Permanent occupancy permit?
I'd have to discuss.
Delaying her occupancy permit.
Well, I don't believe, she just recently moved in, so she must have an occupancy with restrictions. But I can find that out for the board and email you tomorrow and,
I mean, here's what I would look at. We've done this, and I don't know how you feel about this, Rich. If she doesn't have an occupancy, we give her a 60-day temporary occupancy permit. With the condition that they remove the stumps and seed, put the proper seed on. That way she can move in. We've got a little bit of clout. If they don't do it, then she does not get a permanent occupancy.
That's another question now. We don't know what she's got.
No, she's, She's moved in and actually seen furniture in his house and, you know, she, I could find out tomorrow morning and you guys could have your answer whether she has an occupancy or not.
Rich?
Rich? Yeah.
Hi, Steve. This is Captain Sellers, the town's fire inspector. If she does not have an occupancy permit and it hasn't been signed off by either myself or the building inspector, she can't be living there.
Right, so she most definitely probably does have an occupancy.
Um, the occupancy permit is not officially signed off by the building inspector as of yet.
She's taking a risk being in that building.
She shouldn't be living there.
I actually have it here in the office. The building inspector, I believe, gave to Russ Corabo maybe a verbal or an email that he was going to sign off, but this was back at the very beginning of the pandemic. And somehow or another, we did not have the building permit card. Now we are in possession of the building permit card, so we do have it. It's a matter of the building inspector having to sign off on it. Captain Sellers, you didn't sign off on it?
I was just, I was just going to ask you, I don't know if I've, I do so many,
Let me go get it.
I don't know if I've signed off on it or not.
Is there another information you could share with, excuse me, Mary? Is there any other information you can share with us about that card, like a date?
I do not have a date that Captain Sellers signed it, but Captain Sellers, you did sign it.
Okay.
Building inspector went out for a final inspection, I believe it was March 30th. And I just assumed that he took the card with him when he completed the inspection. And then the bank wanted a copy of it and I couldn't find it, so I reached out to Russ and it turned out that Russ still had it. So.
Well, excuse me, Mary. It sounds to me like we do have an occupancy here. It seems the relevant people have established that we have an occupancy, so I would just suggest that you may, if I may, provide an approval on conditions that we reseed the basin and remove two stumps located in the stormwater detention basin.
Mary, can I ask a question?
Sure.
My opinion, you don't have an occupancy until it's signed by the building inspector. You're not saying that that has not been signed yet, right?
It has not been signed, but if,
Well, we do, again, I'm throwing this back. I don't want to hold the lady up.
Right.
I want to have something to make sure they go or remove the stumps. So if we issued a 30 or 60 or 90-day temporary occupancy permit, once the stumps are removed and it's seeded, then have them sign off on the final occupancy. That way we've got a little bit of protection to make sure the builder completes the process and the lady can move in her house. Does that make sense or not?
I think so, yeah.
It makes sense to me.
How does the engineer feel about that, Steve?
I, I, is it Susan? Is your first name Frank? I'm not sure.
Norman.
I've been called worse than that, that's all.
Okay, I won't call you worse than that then. Norm, I would believe that we would, it would be acceptable to us. I just need to make one phone call to Russ. He could get a backhoe up here within the week and remove the stumps and reseed the basin if that is something that you feel would be a fair move at this point.
I mean, personally, I do. I don't know how the others feel about it, but.
Sure.
We just want to make sure it's done, okay? That's the bottom line. And it doesn't impact your as-built plan.
Understood.
Okay, you addressed the issues that dealt with the as-built plan. But what it does do is lets the builder know that, oh my, you made a mistake there and you got to deal with it and get it fixed. So if there is no occupancy permit signed off, we can, we can put the word temporary on what she's got there. Temporary for, I don't care if it's even 30 days, okay? If you say you're going to get it done, we can be put on our next meeting in two weeks. we can be put on our next meeting in two weeks and you you come back to us and say it's done. Okay, and it's starting to grow. Some vegetation is starting to grow. And get the, get the DPW to rectify his memo that says, oh, by the way, that, you know, we got some stumps and lack of vegetation in the in the detention basin.
Okay, what I could do is this, um, I could provide uh or set up a meeting with Peter Gerhardt and make sure that we have a meeting after Russ has gone in and pulled out the stumps and seeded the basin and we could provide you with a next um for the next um meeting that you have of documentation and photos of the removal of stump and also the seeding of the basin if that would be sufficient.
Yep.
We'll hear that. So do we give a thirty day temporary occupancy so she can move in, Rich?
Make a motion, Norman. Make a motion. Make a motion to notify the building inspector to issue a thirty day temporary occupancy permit. Even though she's already in the house, okay? But let's do that.
That the building inspector issue a temporary occupancy permit. And in that thirty days, the stumps have to be removed and the proper seeding has to be put in the basin. And then we need a signed letter from our DPW saying that that uh work has been done.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that, yes.
Okay, Dale seconds it. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye for me, Dale?
Aye.
Christine? Okay, your mic's off, but I.
I'm sorry, aye.
Roger?
Sorry.
And Norman?
Aye.
I'm going by faces across it, Norman, but I'm not uh picking on you in any way. Uh, okay, we passed. In earnestly, we'll put it on it, we'll put it on our old business on our next meeting.
Which is?
June twenty second.
June twenty second. Thank you, Mary.
Mary, could you send me a reminder for that, please?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for attending, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Richard, Norman, the rest of the board, Sergeant, Captain.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Don't forget to thank Frank.
Thanks again.
Okay, we have some submissions. First submission, a two Milbury Boulevard, application for site plan review and approval, minor applicant, oxid, casual dining. Owner is two Milbury LLC, the two patio spaces for outdoor dining. Now, Mary, I I thought I'd received something from the town manager. I received a phone call from her earlier in the earlier, uh later last week or something regarding these outdoor dining situations that the restaurants are being forced into due to pandemic. And she got done talking to the lieutenant governor and said that uh basically, the the uh board of selectmen, we're gonna handle all I don't want to call it site plans. That's what got me in the first, that first time I heard about this one. And the, you know, Paul, you were the first one to actually ask the town to set that up, but I then I then I've seen things on TV where out in out in Boston and that they they're they're taking over the the uh sidewalks and part of the roads even to create outdoor spaces. Well, basically, the the state's attitude is that they're not really site plans. They're temporary permissions to allow outdoor dining. Okay, with uh a temporary nature only. It's not supposed to be permanent. But then I, then I saw this uh application and it looks like you want to build permanent outdoor dining, which is okay. I mean, I can understand that too. Uh, but like I said, it's gonna take you a while to dig up pavement and uh set it, set a patio in and all that other good stuff you want to do. I just wanted to let you know that is from a town's point of view, it looks like the board of selectmen are gonna handle any uh changes of.
Yeah, any approvals.
Any approvals and sites changes.
Yep.
Now, I do truly treat this as a site plan. You want, you want to add?
Yeah, this is, this is something that's gonna be permanent. This is something that we wanted for the building when we decided it, we stoned it. Uh, we put the French doors in to give the building some curb appeal because the building does not face Route twelve. So we figured in the long run, we'll get a patio in and then this whole thing happened. So we're sitting in front of those feet for a month and we decided, you know what, we gotta spend our money and just get this done. We were very fortunate. We have a couple of good contractors. Um, so we want to do it. We want to make it permanent. We're talking a cement pad about about ten feet wide, about thirty six feet uh to match up the cooler. Um, so it 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 flows pretty well, two retractable awnings measuring thirty five feet. They're electric. Um, we're gonna do some nice wrought iron railings around it. What we need to do is create more curb appeal for the mall, more for the restaurant. It's all about making sure the mall continues. Uh, you've seen the mall in twenty, with the twenty-five years we've been there, the last five years when when my wife and I bought it. Yeah, we're just trying to make sure it stays current. Uh, right now, we're trying to put in a bakery at the other end uh to give us another anchor store. So we're looking at two different, two different patios here. Um, one is underneath the canopy, which we don't use now. The doors there have been uh locked and they're no longer needed. Uh, we had Burton Engineering come up with the for the the patron load. We have enough doors without those two doors. Um, but we're adding two more doors in the patio area with gates that open out uh if need be for emergency purposes. Um, but this is definitely permanent. This is not temporary. I'm not even sure my wife and I are gonna open for uh outside dining at the restaurant. I really don't find the appeal of sitting in a parking lot underneath a tent. You know, with a with a plate in eighty-five degrees outside and the wind's blowing. I don't see the tent being that good. A nice patio with wrought iron railings, maybe some canvas, ice awnings, nice lighting. I see that. Um, so we want to make sure this is permanent and once again, we want to make sure we have the curb appeal that the mall deserves. So that's why we're here. We want to make sure this gets done, gets done right.
Well, good. Then you, then you answered my question. It definitely would uh meet the criteria of a minor site plan review process. Uh, that would be basically be uh given the approval of the planning board and any work done on it will go through the boards, the the departments of the town.
Yeah, we already.
Through getting your occupancy permits.
Yeah, we submitted, we submitted a plan to Duffy already. Uh, and that actually the plan that you see with all the bollards on there and everything else. Uh, Mike Landry, step of stone, is doing all the the contracting for it.
Okay. All right, so we have a completed submission. It's, everything's great. Entertain a motion to accept this submission and to approve it as a minor site plan process.
I'll make that motion here.
Okay, Norman made the motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I will second that, uh, Rich.
Okay, seconded by Dale. Okay, any further discussion?
I have one, Rich.
Yeah, okay.
Paul, uh, your your awnings that you're looking to put over the patio? Yes. Um, do you, do you know if, do they meet NFPA seventeen ten? Which is? Flammability testing? I believe they do, uh, sun umbrella fabric. So we went for the best of the best. Okay.
I'm excited for you, Paul. Good luck.
Thank you very much. We're really looking forward.
To my uh motion that they go through the proper permitting process and deal with the local boards, which is one of the questions that Ken has.
What's that again?
Follow that on an individual board basis.
Yeah, yeah, all these questions will get answered as it goes along.
We're approving the plan. We wish you luck and I think it's a good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all those voting in favor. I vote yes. Christine?
Yes.
Okay.
Good luck.
Roger?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Okay. Carried five zero, so good luck, I.
Thank you.
I hope you can get, I hope you can get it going pretty dang quick.
So, uh, the next office is meeting, I believe?
Next step is selectmen's.
What's that again?
Oh, the next step is the selectmen's meeting.
Okay, and that's in July.
I do not know when that is scheduled.
Yeah, July seventh, I believe.
You can, you can check with the selectmen's office.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck, Paul. Yeah.
Okay. Next submission, seven forty-two Main Street, application for site plan review and approval. Applicant MMA Architects, owner Walmart Real Estate Business Trust. Modification of packing area for online grocery pickup service to include packing stalls, stall signs and directional signs. Obviously, that business is going gangbusters over there. Uh, they're, they're increasing the size of that. So dated five fifteen twenty twenty, they put through an application. Everything. Everything looks okay. And I don't think you want to, I don't. Mary, are they gonna have to submit uh? Is this gonna have any uh stormwater management issues?
I do not believe so. Um, I don't know exactly how many parking spaces they're adding. Does the plan say? I don't have it in front of me.
It's like a good amount, what I'm seeing. It looks like they're doubling the size of that area back there. I just want to know if there's gonna be a public hearing regarding stormwater management.
I don't think they're adding enough impervious.
And uh, goo- good evening. This is Brad Turner. I'm actually with MMA Architects and I'm also on the phone if um I'm able to potentially speak to the plan.
Okay. I'm glad you're on.
So I can. Yes, thank you for having me and um apologies for no video. I uh had some technical difficulties calling in with the Zoom link, but I just called in via phone, so I hope that's not an issue.
Not an issue.
Great. So yeah, I can essentially elaborate a little bit on what our plan that we've submitted um that you're looking at and and what we're proposing to do. So obviously, as you've mentioned, you know, Walmart's seeing an increased demand in the online grocery pickup service. So they want to, you know, add available spaces for online grocery pickup. So what we are actually doing is we are not adding or deleting any impervious surface. We're not modifying the parking count. We're actually simply restriping existing parking spaces that are already there today. Um, so existing today, there are actually eight parking stalls that are identified for online grocery pickup. And what we're doing to those stalls is we are restriping them a different color. So instead of orange striping, they're going to be either white or yellow striping, whatever is the adjacent um striping color of the parking stalls today. So that's for the existing stalls and then what we're doing is we're restriping eight additional stalls and adding stall identification signage for the online grocery pickup. And again, no change in stall dimensions or overall parking count uh for the site. So by restriping these stalls, um, again, that that's the way that they're adding, you know, online grocery pickup spaces. So we will end up with a total of sixteen spaces for online grocery pickup. Um, so that that is the main purpose of our application here and what's shown on the plan. And then as you can also see, what's shown on the plan is we're doing some other minor updates. We're adding crosswalks, you know, for associates as they bring the groceries to customers' cars. So we're adding um those crosswalks and pedestrian crossing signage for that vehicles that may be traveling there. Um, you know, that that those signages are being added. And we also have a new um light pole that we're providing to increase the illumination levels um in this area, again, for safety purposes and for uh lighting levels. So that's essentially a little bit about our application.
Okay. Okay, you clarified quite a few things for me. I think we could, I think we could go with a minor site plan on this one also.
Thank you.
Why they town boards couldn't handle making sure everything goes according to the plan?
Yeah.
Anyone agree with that?
Yeah.
I agree with it.
If if I could add one. I I know Mr. Stafford has had issues in the past with the uh height of the stop signs at the throughout the Walmart parking lot. And I did receive something earlier today from um MMA Architects and it's nineteen ninety-two plan and it actually has um uh an original plan that would have been submitted probably back nineteen ninety-two that has their stop sign height requirements on it at seven feet, so.
Okay, well, they're showing new, they're showing new signs on their plan at the six foot two and above ground, so.
Oh, okay.
Kinda, this is kinda new to us, but I guess, I guess it, this must be a a standard practice to put them that high. It doesn't make sense to me because people's eyes don't go up that high usually when they're driving, but.
Six foot two.
I I think they're actually eight foot two, Rich. If I'm reading this right, it looks like the uh the base is two feet.
Yeah, that's a, that's below, the base is below ground. See, it says ground surface.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I had to fold it over.
Yeah, yeah, so it's 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 six two. If that's the way the world is in packing lots, so be it. I mean, Jeff and I had the same opinion.
Yeah, Rich, I'm sure.
Put a stop sign up there at seven feet high, but who's gonna notice? You know?
Yeah.
I think if you, if you're doing it for snow storage or any other type of hindrance of the usual height, and I think you should have two of them, one at the usual height and one at the extremely high height. If that's, if snow storage creates that type of problem. I I just, I don't understand. But I'm not an architect. I'm not a, not a uh a building code guy or traffic code guy or whatever, but just didn't make sense to me why they were placed seven foot high. Just doesn't, didn't make sense to me at all. Should be at least two of them, one normal height and one at seven foot tall. That's the way I would look at it from my logic anyway. But we'll let that go. I know Jeff has very big concerns about those things and so do I to a certain degree. At least we got the uh the way in delineated so that it's a more like a road now. So. I'll go with that. But anyway, we got a motion on the, on the floor here to uh approve this submittal for a minor site plan review process. So let's go with the vote.
I'll second that.
Are you actually, sorry?
I think it was seconded already. I don't know. I don't remember.
I'm sorry. Can we, can we start again? I don't know who made the motion.
Who made the motion? Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this plan and go through the mini site plan review process.
Okay, is there a second? Second, Dale?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, okay. All those voting in favor? Aye. Dale?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Carrie, you're near us. Okay. Okay, that, that were all of the things on the agenda. I got, just have a couple of questions on. Maybe, uh, maybe I'll pick. Uh. Mary's brain a little bit on this. What's going on at? Two fifty-four Sutton Avenue with this building that uh. Applicants want to operate an East Coast Metal Roofing LLC.
Yeah.
So they're looking to um use the former Butler Fuel. Um.
Okay.
For their roofing business, so they would use the office as an office to um remodel, et cetera. Um, because it is. A commercial. Uh, establishment in a residential zone. I believe they need to go to the zoning board of appeals for special permit to um change. The change from one pre-existing non-conforming use to another. And I believe they would probably also need um a site plan approval from the planning board.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarification. So it's going through the ZBA first?
It would have to go to the zoning board of appeals first, yeah.
Okay. Just checking my paperwork. I thought there was one more thing I wanted to ask. Not finding it, but. I do see we have a new DPW project manager.
We do. His name is Peter Gearhard. Um, and so far, he's doing very well.
Okay, well, that's good. Hopefully, he can join us on Zoom at some point.
Yeah.
Get to know.
Planning board things. He just started, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Yeah.
Hey, Rich.
All right, I got nothing else. Anyone else got anything?
Rich, anyone on the town planner? You heard any more about that?
Yeah, I did hear a little bit about that. I guess uh, our number one guy uh. Had too many demands. It, that, that didn't look like that was going to work out, so she's working with number two.
Good.
That's all I can tell you at this point.
That's fine.
So it is still in the process. She's still, you're going to get somebody.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Entertained a motion to adjourn. Huh?
Oh, um.
Mine for you, Ron.
Oh.
Ryan, great.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Norman.
Norman.
Okay, all those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine? Roger and Norman.
Aye.
Carrie.
All right, everyone, take care, stay safe.